Okay, let's get going here. Good evening and welcome to the November 5th, 2014 hearing of the City of Brookhaven Planning Commission. I'm Stan Siegel and I'll be presiding this evening. This public meeting has been called on matters pursuant to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance and specified on tonight's agenda. The November 5th, 2014 meeting is called to order. Let's get going here.
Good evening and welcome to the...
All right, well, if you didn't hear me, they're gonna repeat it.[32.11][32.11](Laughter). It's gonna be a long evening.
Was that you?
There's a loop problem we have.
We fixed that.
All right, it's fixed. So, as a way of introduction, I'm gonna call the roll and have each commissioner acknowledge their presence. Just raise your hands so everybody knows who you are. Commissioner Chris Bottiker.
Here.
Commissioner Shannon Cameron.
Present.
This is alphabetical. Commissioner Rob Frankore.
Here.
Commissioner John Funny.
Present.
Commissioner Bert Levy.
Present.
And Commissioner Caitlin Miller.
Present.
Okay, let the record indicate that we have seven members are present and we have a quorum and we're gonna proceed. At this time, I'm gonna ask everybody to either silence or turn off your cell phones. Let's see, who do we have here this evening? We've, just so, again, little introductions, we've got the Director of Planning for the City of Brookhaven, Director of Community Development, Mr. Ben Song. You raise your hand, Ben, so they know who you are. We've got the Public Works is Richard Meehan and one of our city planners, Aronda Smith, is right there. And Kelly Reynolds will be taking down every word we say. Okay, there should be copies of the agenda and other related documents in the back of the room. If you'll be making a comment this evening, I hope you've picked up a comment card and turned it in over here to Kelly. We'll need that before you come up and speak.
Back in the room.
Brad's back there?
Yes.
Yeah, there we go. In case anything, if we get another looping, he gets to, you know. The Planning Commission is established by the Code of Ordinances of the City of Brookhaven. Our purpose is to conduct public hearings on land use, zoning changes, code text amendments, and other related matters. The Planning Commission's actions are not a final determination regarding the matters that are brought before us, but rather a recommendation to the mayor and the council on the viewpoint of this commission. So, we're gonna listen to what everybody has to say, we're gonna make a recommendation that's gonna go to the City Council, who will make the final decision on anything. I'd also like to say that in making our recommendations, this commission does everything to balance, we can, to balance the land use with the interests of the applicant, the neighboring community, and the entire city of Brookhaven. All of us are intimately familiar with the city. We all live here. We're all your neighbors and we live right here. And the decisions that we make this evening, or recommendations we make this evening, affect us just like they, you know, affect you. So, not everyone's gonna agree with what we come up with tonight. Just know that we're doing the best we can and we're gonna come up with a recommendation based on what we hear and what we see this evening. Let me tell you, before we get into the agenda, let me go through, for those of you who have not been here before, let me kinda go through the process a little bit, so you understand what's gonna happen and how it's gonna work. We'll take up the agenda items before us from right off, you know, from the agenda. We're working on me talking. Then we'll have the staff, we'll present a summary of the agenda item. And it'll be their recommendation to us and the reasons for them, you know, and reasons for those recommendations. Then we'll open the public hearing, we'll ask the applicant or their representative to come up and normally they'll have 10 minutes, they'll have 10 minutes to speak, of which they can use all of it up front, they could talk for two minutes and say, "I wanna reserve eight." I've been told tonight, and we had a little discussion about it, but I've been told tonight, we're gonna deal with two applications, RZ 14-16 and RZ 14-17, the Rockhaven Homes application together. So, to help you plan ahead, we're gonna give the applicant 20 minutes, you know, we'll start with 20 minutes, 10 minutes for, you know, I mean. So, the applicant or the representative will get 20 minutes. We'll then ask for those who are in support of the application to come up and speak and kinda help us understand why you're supportive of it. And those in support will get 20 minutes. Then we'll go on to those who are opposed to the application and that group will have 20 minutes as well. Now, we're gonna ask everybody, we're gonna try to get as many people in as we can. If we have to extend beyond that, we will, but, you know, we, if somebody, I mean, it's okay for you to come up if you're the sixth person in line and the previous five people have expressed your point of view, I mean, it's your time. If you wanna come up and say it again, please come up and say it again, but it's also okay to come up and state your name and your address and say, "I'm opposed," or "I'm in support of," and "I agree with the person," you know, this person's name. It's okay, you can do it either way and we're okay. And we're gonna limit any one speaker to three minutes, and that's just courtesy, 'cause we're trying to get as many people in, get your point across, again, be succinct, and let us know. We're trying to understand, we're trying to understand all points of view, so that when we deliberate, we can come up with, you know, to our best abilities, you know, a good recommendation for the City Council. Okay, we're gonna also understand that zoning matters are emotional, so no applauding, no jumping up and down, no cat calls, no whooping. Either way, you know, we, you know, I mean, you can let us, we know who's here and who's not here. We'll then close the public hearing and this commission will deliberate. We'll have an opportunity at that point to ask questions of the staff, the applicant, and anyone who has spoken. If you haven't spoken, you know, we have, so it's anyone who has come up. So, we'll then take as much time as we need to feel comfortable in our recommendation. So, did I cover everything? Did I get it all? You'd think after two years, I'd have this down, but I don't, we don't, and...
Yes, you do.
So, with that, first order of business tonight is approval of minutes, approval of September 29th, 2014 Planning Commission Work Session Meeting Minutes. Do, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we approve the September 29th, 2014 Planning Commission Work Session Meeting.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any discussion on it? Nope, all those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second item, approval of October 1st, 2014 Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes. I'll entertain a motion on that one.
Go, John.
Somebody...
Mr. Chair, I would approve, I would move that we approve the October 1st, 2014 Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes.
All right, great, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor approving the minutes of October 1st signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great, approved. Mr. Song, any organizational procedural items from you?
No organizational and procedural items at this time.
Okay, anybody up here have anything that we need? I guess I'll make a quick one that, although it'll be published, that we've moved, in the past, we've had normal work sessions on the Monday prior to the meeting, like, we had a work session about this on Monday. And I guess, starting next week, when we have a special-called meeting on the, on the application for annexation for children's healthcare and Executive Park, it's here, November the 12th, so it's next Tuesday night, and we'll have our work session...
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, next Wednesday. So, and we'll have our work session at 5:00 and then from there forward through 2015, we're gonna move work sessions to the same day, so we don't have to be here twice and everything will be fresh in our minds, so, for any of you who keep track of that, which I can't imagine, but, all right. If not, let's move into unfinished business. First item on the agenda is RZ 14-11, Haven Real Estate Investments, a rezoning request from R-75 to RA-8.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, this traveled, the case traveled over to the City Council, was remanded back in the hopes that the applicant would work with the staff to come up with the redesign in terms of the site plan associated with the rezoning request from R-75 to RA-8. Unfortunately, no revision to the site plan was ever completed. The applicant has submitted a letter requesting withdrawal without prejudice of the request. And I don't believe the applicant is here. Oh, there she is, she is here tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
That is it? So, we'll open the public hearing. You'd like to say something? Nope, you could just say hello and, all right.[610.16][610.16](Laughter). Do we have any comment cards?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll close the, close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion on this to, I guess, approve the request for, yeah, or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I move that on RZ 14-11, the council permit the withdrawal of the rezoning application without prejudice.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, who was that, so they can get it on record?
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah, there we go, we got it. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of withdrawal without prejudice signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Good seeing you.[658.41][658.41](Laughter). They're not all this easy, folks. Okay, the next items on the agenda of unfinished business, 'cause this was before us last month and it is within our procedures for the Planning Commission itself to accept a deferral for 30 days, and it didn't, so this did not go to the City Council. Came before us, there were requests for a deferral, we approved that deferral, so it's now back before us. So, this is RZ 14-, and we're gonna hear them together, RZ 14-16, Rockhaven Homes LLC for a rezoning request, and RZ 14-17. So, with that, we'll get the, you're jumping the gun on this one, we'll get the, our Director of Community Development, Mr. Song.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the request is being heard concurrently for RZ 14-16 and RZ 14-17. The subject property is located at the intersection of Oak Forest Drive and Ashford Dunwoodie Road. RZ 14-16 is specific to Track A, let me see, yeah, yeah. Track A, which is the parcel to the south. RZ 14-17 is related to Track B, which is the parcel to the north. Track A, the applicant is proposing to locate 36 townhome units. Track B, which is to the north, again, the applicant is proposing to locate 12 townhome units for a total of 36 units, which would be an aggregate density of 7.64 units per acre. If we were to break it down further in terms of the individual parcel, the tracks and the associated density, Track B, again, to the north, it'll be 12 lots, which is 7.46 acres. Track A would be 24 lots for 7.73 units per acre. Based upon the location and its proximity to existing ONI uses and also to the regional center character area, staff felt that the proposed use of townhome units would act as a transitional use and transitional development from the major thoroughfare of Ashford Dunwoodie Road extending into Oak Forest Hill subdivision. And based upon that review, staff has recommended approval of RZ 14-16 as well as RZ 14-17 with 16 conditions listed in the staff report that has been shared. Staff, again, will stipulate to the report and to the conditions as stated. Thank you.
Ben, would you, just to be, make it sure, I mean, I think we all know that, but just in case, there were two site plans in here, 'cause it was original one, there were revised one.
Yes.
And in our packet, it is page...
It's the new, so the old site plan is shown on page 58.
But the new one, the one that we're addressing?
The new one is on page 87.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Right, originally, they were showing 42 total units, now they're showing 36.
Right.
They did show additional separation of proposed townhome units from abutting residential property lines. So, again, I believe the separation is near around 50 to 60, 50 feet, 50 to 60 feet from the property lines. And I, actually, one other point of note, in regards to the variances that we discussed during work session, I looked into it a little bit further. They did show a variance on Track A, which is on the lower end, along Oak Forest Drive, technically that is not needed. I believe that was still a remnant from the original RM 100 rezoning request. The rezoning, or the variance from Ashford Dunwoodie Road for Track A as well, the applicant, I think, on the site plan has referenced a reduction from 20 feet to 5 feet. 20 feet is actually associated with, again, the older rezoning request to RM 100. Technically, the required side, or the required setback from Ashford Dunwoodie Road, in this case, within the RA-8 zoning, would be 15 feet. But I wanted to point out, in terms of the staff report, if you look at condition number two, as shared during work session, we are looking to condition the entire site and all frontages along Oak Forest Hill or Ashford Dunwoodie Road to maintain a minimum setback of 20 feet.
And that's on page 122, right, Ben? To be clear, 'cause we've had so many...
Sorry?
What page are they?
Oh, the condition?
Yeah.
The condition is shown on page 50. Condition number two.
Again, bear with us, 'cause we have the original, we have the, you know, and we believe we're all on the...
On page 122.
Same page, this is making sure we're on the same page.
Page 50, are they the same?
Let me get to, you said 122?
Yeah.
Oh, it's, yes, well, because that's our, remember, there are two packages.
Okay.
Right?
They are the same, okay.
And they're the same.
As long as they're the same.
Yes, it's the same.
Thank you.
Same report.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
All right, well, in that case, we'll open the public hearing and I'd like you to introduce yourself, Mr. Dillard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Doug Dillard with Wythe and Noack Currie and Wilco, we represent the applicant. The site plan that we filed on October the 29th is the site plan that we're asking for here, okay? So, I don't know where that is in your packet, but...
We got the right page.
Yes, 36, it's 36 lots and the overall density is 7.64, okay? And I'm gonna state very briefly in my opening and reserve my remaining for rebuttal, that we support staff's recommendation and that the site plan, which we have provided, is the site plan that we asked that you condition your rezoning to. We also asked that, as a part of the October 29th, and I'll go through that supplemental, we showed some examples of townhomes adjacent to minor arterial streets, and that's what Ashford Dunwoodie is. It is not a residential street. So, we ask that you look at that in light of the current comprehensive plan, what's across the street, what's adjacent to this property, and the overall area, subarea that this property is located in, with the understanding that this property has remained vacant, basically, or rented substandardly over the last 25 years. And we submit this application to you as a solution to what has been a neighborhood problem. And with that, I will reserve my remaining time for rebuttal.
Which will be about 18 minutes. Yeah, you got it, okay. Okay, so, roughly, how many comment cards you have overall?
Well, first, I have one in support.
Okay, and then about how many, just curious. All right, that's, I can tell from the county, all right, so...
About 12 in opposition.
Okay. Just wanna check, you know, on time, make sure everybody's gonna have plenty of time to talk. So, who's first? We'll call the person who's in support or the group that's in support.
Sure, it's Christopher Harris.
Chairman, that's, he's the client, so I don't think we need, we'll reserve his time for rebuttal also, okay?
Well, yeah, you're not gonna be able to reserve his, I mean, if he, you know, you come up and if they like to speak, he can, you know, if not, that's okay too, I mean.
For the record, so it's on, he, if I need him, I'll call on him, okay? Thank you.
We're just trying to do, trying to do this right. Okay, you wanna, then we will begin listening, hearing those who are in opposition. And Ben, would you call the first one?
Clay Robertson.
Can I ask a point of order first? I believe I have people that are deferring their time to me, I'm just trying to clarify how much time I have to speak.
I mean, you have three, you have, you know, you have...
Three minutes.
Three minutes, I mean, every individual has...
I know, but what I'm saying is, there's individuals who put in comment cards who wanna give me their time.
There'll be plenty of, I would ask that, if you have people who put comment cards in, I think we kinda come up with it, you can't read the comment into the record, so, you know, if somebody's got a comment card, they'll need to come up, state their name, who they are, just tell us they're in oppose, that's okay. And if there's more than, if there's time left at the end, you can come back at, you know, come back after that.
Okay, well, I'll just get through what I can and...
Okay.
See where that goes.
Yeah.
Like, well, my name's Clay Robertson and I'm here...
We need to make sure everybody gets a chance, and I know you're saying, everybody's deferring to you, we don't know that without, till we hear from them, so...
If you're deferring to me, would you please stand up?
No, that's all right, that's okay, just give us the three minutes and...
All right, okay, let's start. My name's Clay Robertson, I live at 4269 Ashwoodie Trail, my wife and I are homeowners in Oak Forest Hills. We first of all like to thank you, in the risk of wasting my time, I want to thank you for your service. We all recognize the difficult decision you have to make balancing homeowners' interests and the interest of a developer, but I would submit to you, this is not a tough case. No matter how much smokescreen they throw up, I wanna make two points to you. The first is, I wanna appeal to your sensitivities, and that would be, if I can throw up a couple pictures really quick, I'll just put it right on top.
Is that, is that working for us?
It is.
Okay.
Oh, you can't really see that well, but that's Oak Forest Hills as it currently exists. Oak Forest Hills, this is what is proposed. I don't know what I would call that...
Flip it 180 if you would, there you go.
I guess I would call that Oak Fortress Hills. It's just missing a moat and a drawbridge.[1326.91][1326.91](Laughter). But, you know, we can talk about trees and traffic and schools, and those are all good arguments, and I would commend you to read all of our written arguments that we've made, but we don't have time to talk about everything. So, I wanna talk about what really matters, and that's money, economics. That's really what's driving all of this. And the factors to be considered by the commission are whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. And somebody's gonna have to explain to me what rented substandardly is. Either a property's rented or it's not, there's no substandard renting. You say what the rent is and you either pay it or you don't. All of the homes on the subject property, the six homes are currently rented, and several neighbors, I could call Alan Cole, Marie Cole, a lot of my neighbors who've lived there for 40 years can tell you, they've been consistently rented for decades. So, to say they're substandardly rented, that's just a falsehood. The homes have never been, in all those years, never been listed for individual sale. If a property doesn't have a reasonable economic use as it's currently zoned, wouldn't you have tried to sell it or unload it? Obviously, those homeowners have felt that they could rent those homes and occupy those homes for 50 years, so they are, there is a reasonable economic use. It's disingenuous to argue otherwise, and the best evidence of that is within the past year, one of those homes had a tree fall on top of it and crush the home. Anybody who drove down Ashford Dunwoodie Road saw it. And that homeowner, instead of taking a total loss and pocketing a check, if there was no reasonable economic use, that's what they would've done, instead, they rebuilt the home. It's a pretty little home there. They spent their own money to rebuild that home, that is the best evidence that there's a reasonable economic use. The homeowner himself would have to say it, 'cause he spent his own money on it. There are new single-family homes being built all over Oak Forest Hills, Canterbury Hills, Nancy Creek Heights. In fact, Rockhaven Homes built the one right next to me. They sold it this year, so they can't argue that you can't buy a lot in Rock, in Oak Forest Hills and sell it as long as you buy it, buy the lot, buy the property at fair market value. And that's what we got going on here, this is circular logic. These home, these property owners have lumped these properties together and they're allowing the developer to come to you and say, and we've heard it at all the meetings, "We just can't make single-family homes work, because it's gonna cost too much to develop for single-family lots." That is circular logic. That would be like me saying, "I'm gonna sell my property to somebody for $50 million, and the only thing they can build there now is a skyscraper, so you gotta allow them to rezone it." The answer is...
I apologize, three minutes is up.
So, finish up this thing and then we'll...
Okay, the answer is, I'll come back.
You'll come back.
You deny the rezoning and you tell the developer to go back to the table and meet with the property owners and make them sell their property at fair market value, so that they can build houses that we'd all be proud of in our neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell me again your address?
4269 Ashwoodie.
4269, okay. Okay. And again, if there's time at the, you know, the 20 minutes, we're gonna give everybody enough time, so...
Chris Reddy?
I'm Chris Reddy, I live at 4087 Shawnee Lane in the Nancy Creek Heights neighborhood, which is adjacent to Oak Forest Hills. We have approximately 125 homes in our neighborhood. You know, this kinda came about, we canvassed the neighborhood, talking to the neighbors to kinda feel out the tone throughout the homes in our neighborhood, it was pretty much negative across the board. You know, I'm sure everyone's gonna go on tonight, in-depth, the reasons why, you know, traffic, the impact on the already stressed school system there. I think that no one in our neighborhood, and I don't think anyone in this room is naive enough to think that it'll never be built on. We know that something will happen, we just, as far as our neighborhood goes, feel like that it could be done a little bit more tastefully than proposed in this plan. And for that reason, our board has chose to take a stance on this for our neighborhood, for our association, and we do not support the current proposal or the current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Reddy, is that what it was?
Yes, sir.
Chris, okay.
Michelle Rutherford?
I'm Michelle Rutherford, I live on Ashford Dunwoodie, I am the immediate neighbor to this project in a single-family home. I've been there since 1999.
The address, what's the address?
4089. I'm the immediate neighbor. There is a property between us, but that property does not have a house on it. I bought my house in 99, I've since had three children in that house. I have no problems living on Ashford Dunwoodie in a single-family house. I appreciate that Doug Dillard has finally brought us a developer that wants to put residential properties and not commercial. Thank you. But what would be best for this development would be single-family homes. Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Rutherford. Next?
Alan Cole.
If it, by the way, if it helps, if you've got a lot of people, whoever's, you wanna call the next, they can stand by and, just get ready. Who will be after?
I believe it's Noel Hoagie.
Okay, just so you know afterwards, okay, go ahead, Alan.
Okay. Alan Cole, 4219 Ashwoodie Trail, and we appreciate y'all listening to this. And I'm representing the Oak Forest Hills neighborhood. As a group, we stand united 100% against the zoning. It will change the character of our neighborhood. And the only reason they're going for this rezoning is money, and I don't understand. The homes are there, I've talked to five builders that would love to build single-family homes there, but they can't afford a million dollars an acre. The going value in our neighborhood is somewhere around $300,000, $400,000 an acre. So, what we're doing is, we're trying to rezone this to get somebody some more money, but it has nothing to do with viability. It'll build out a single family. And down the street, across the way, four homes were wrecked in the 70s and 80s, they built homes, they sell for $700,000 plus or minus. They've been on Ashford Dunwoodie a long time, and that's, it's north of Nancy Creek, but right around the school area. And then I hear the statement that Ashford Dunwoodie's not a residential road, but once you lean, leave perimeter summit, it's all residential. And we have homes from, at one time, someone was in the million-dollar range, I don't know if it still is, but they're expensive homes. The only ones left are these, and they've never been offered up for sale. If they had, I'm sure they'd have been bought and you would see different homes sitting on it. So, the only rezoning I'm looking at is, they're applying to get rezoned, so the value of their land will go up. It has nothing to do with us, it does not help the Oak Forest neighborhood, it would change our character totally. And if you look at, are we talking about just this, do we have to come back to the smaller plat too? Am I just talking about the...
No, both.
Okay, we're talking about both, 'cause the small plat...
So, I have 20 minutes.
The Track B is basically in our subdivision. It barely has a presence on Ashford Dunwoodie. It's the cheapest to develop, so they're trying to put the highest, they're trying It's the cheapest to develop, so they're trying to put the highest, they're trying to put a lot of townhomes on it because it'll cost them nothing. That's their profit level. But there's currently a home on it that's in our subdivision. It sits pretty in our subdivision. Track that's in between has always been owned by the lady who owns the two homes up there. They're in, they're in executor states. I don't know the whole thing. There may be someone here to tell you that they got in an argument before I moved in, which was 42 years ago, and they said, you'll regret whatever happened in the garden club or something. And it's been that way ever since, because when I've gone up there campaigning or talking or, they never, if you're from Oak Forest, they didn't talk to you. So, that's been the issue at the corner. But, but rezoning it is the key to it, and our neighborhood stands against it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And who's going to meet after this?
Actually...
Right, and then the next one?
Well, the next one who would, who would like to speak would be Dan Prieto.
Okay. Just so you keep going. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm Noel Hoagie. I live at 4202 Candler Lake West. I'm sort of adopted into Oak Forest Hills. I'm not really in any neighborhood, but I live in the area, and I am opposed. I don't really have anything to say other than the fact that I have two young children, and 36 townhomes would certainly add a lot of potential children into an already very overcrowded Montgomery Elementary, which is a stellar school that I'd like my children to go to, and that's a part of City of Brookhaven that I'm proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoagie. Next person, speaker?
Dan Prieto.
And the one after that will be?
I believe Brian Savory.
Okay. And your last name again?
Prieto. And I live at 1454 Oak Forest Court. I have purchased a home there and gutted it, remodeled it, moved in two years ago. Couldn't be happier with the neighborhood. I enjoy the character of the neighborhood. To reiterate some of the comments that we heard earlier, but to expand upon them, Rock Haven, even though they, in their filings with this commission, have said that there is no greater value of this land, they have not only built other homes within the community, they have come to you and asked for partition of currently existing lots so they could squeeze in additional homes into smaller lots. One of the other points I would like to look to is the, the student capacity, student, in the information sheets, it says students generated from proposed development for. Out of 48 townhomes, they've got, they can look through a crystal ball and see only four children living in 48 homes. I wish I'd have had them for the lottery last week. In addition to that, as far as vehicles, both of these will dump into the Oak Forest Home, or Oak Forest Hills subdivision, into an overcrowded intersection as it is. There's development that is being discussed and planned, et cetera, across the street, which is already going to increase the traffic volume. I live in Oak Forest Hills. I work at the Ravineas just across 285. On any given day, it can take me 30 minutes to get home. It's less than a quarter of a mile from, or it's approximately a quarter of a mile from the Ravinia to the traffic light, and it can still take 30-plus minutes. Some of the other documents that were filed with this court spoke about constitutional rights of the petitioners, constitutional rights of the developer. I took note of this for the simple fact that it appears to me boilerplate language that has been presented by the developers' attorneys. If you look through that, you will see that they have threatened or alluded to the fact that they could bring an action before the Gwinnett Superior Court. They couldn't even be bothered to, to show this in the appropriate venue. That's how much they thought this development has put into this, into this petition that they have put before, the ladies and gentlemen of this commission. I would encourage you to scrutinize what they have put forward, because they themselves have said, we want you to consider what's to the left, what's to the right, what's across the street. Well, what's across the street is an additional planned multi-composition development. From their own words, they have asked you to consider this. I ask that you consider not only what words are spoken here today, but the filings that have been made before this commission, and I would ask that you reject this zoning variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prieto.
Brian Savory?
That was close on my name. It's savory.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not an unsavory character, but I do like to cook and make some savory dishes. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you so much for your time.
Everybody always pronounces things the tougher way than...
There you go. I'd like to talk to you about three things tonight. Traffic, well, traffic and traffic, no. Traffic, water and sewer, and, and the school system. When I come home at night from work, I can't get into my neighborhood. I know how tough it is to, for, for everybody in Atlanta to travel the interstates, but when you get off the interstate, you hope that you could get into your neighborhood. I can't. Takes me 10, 15 minutes to get from 285 to the turn lane going into Ashford, Oak Forest Drive. And, and that's with, with no development. With, with all these 40-plus homes and, or 40-plus cars, really, addition, turning on to this, this two-lane street, one lane in each direction, both of those developments from either side are going to feed into that street. So, when I get up in the morning and I have to sit through two or three cycles of lights now, can you imagine what it's going to be like with 40 or 50 cars in addition coming out in the morning and coming home in the evening? So, I, I don't want to add any additional traffic into our neighborhood and make it any worse than it already is for me to get home. The water and sewer infrastructure in this neighborhood, our home is approximately 50 years old, that's when the 50, 60s, that's when it was developed, and that's when the sewer system and the water system was put in place. These additional homes are going to tap into that 50-plus-year-old sewer system. And, and I'm not an expert, but I don't know how they can handle all that additional wastewater. And then I, I think some of my other colleagues, neighbors have, have talked about the, the school system. When we first moved in this neighborhood, there were a lot of old folks like me with no kids. They'd already grown and gone. Today, there were, I mean, last, last week, there were a bunch of trick-or-treaters running through the neighborhood, and, and I don't want any more cars potentially driving through that neighborhood because they can't get through on Ashford Dunwoody to their home and jeopardizing those students, or those kids and potential students for an already overcrowded Montgomery Elementary. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Savory.
I forgot to give you my address, didn't I? 4133 Oak Forest Drive.
Thank you.
Ed Sullivan?
Mr. Roberts, you can see why we have to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak.
Thank you, Arthur. Let me talk to you. I didn't wear a suit, because I just don't wear a suit anymore.
And your address?
Lucky man.
4141 Ashwoodie Trail.
Okay.
Been in the neighborhood 35 years. I live down the hill where the drainage problem is, and then back, it's on the lowest house in the neighborhood. My number-one topic for me is drainage. I've talked to the planning commission or the people that does drainage, and they say, oh, it's all going to go the other way. One or two bulldozers in the wrong direction or a change to the street will take all of that water into my yard, into my backyard, into all the yards behind me also. I have 27 houses from the streets that flow into my yard. Drainage is a major issue for me, and I know they're supposed to put buried, buried pools and everything. It still gets drained out someplace. But if they just changed the grade by accident, which can happen, I now got more street drainage. That's my number-one topic. The other, if I have four topics here, the other one is, for 35 years, I didn't know I had a problem out in my neighborhood. I didn't know that area was a problem. It just came up today in Doug Stark. It's a problem area for the neighborhood. I haven't recognized it at one. They don't mow the yard, but that's their choice, okay? Doesn't affect me, you know, because my yard's mowed. Third thing is, is the, if I can use this little drawing here, this street, Oak Forest in this section before the planner, is a narrow two-lane street with trees right next to it. This past month, the person that lives in this rental house had a, two or three people, had two or three cars parked in that street, just parked, which is legal. You can't get through it. So, if we have more traffic coming in this way, and they stop here, we're going back up traffic on Oak Forest. You won't be able to get to the neighborhood. This one, we'll even congest this area here. I don't, I don't like this, these two roads at all. It just makes it very congested. Not parking entrance in the neighborhood. Right now, the guy put his picture upside down, this is Oak Forest. We have trees all around. It is a forest back there. When, when the building gets in, we actually go between condos, or townhomes. We have changed the whole character, how we move into our neighborhood. I no longer see trees, I see these buildings, and it's like I'm going into a commercial area first before I get home. I didn't, I didn't sign up for that when I bought the house. The house hadn't been that way for 35 years. The neighborhood's not that way. We're a neighborhood, and that's really all I've got. Thank you, Arthur, very much. I am opposed to it for those four reasons.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, right?
Yes.
Eric Hawley?
My name's Eric Hawley. I live at 1478 Ashwoodie Court. I've been in the neighborhood approximately 10 years.
And I'm sorry, tell me your name again.
Eric Hawley.
Thank you.
And I've only got really two points. First of all, I would like to say I agree with all the points that have been made in opposition, but the points I would like to make is that the developer has conveniently suggested that there is a problem that needs to be solved, and they're offering a solution to the problem. Problem is, they never asked anyone, to my knowledge in the neighborhood, if they thought there was a problem or how that problem should be solved. And I think that kind of demonstrates their disdain for the, for the neighbors, or disregard for the neighbors, the, the people who live in my neighborhood. The other point I would like to make is that they have basically threatened the city with a lawsuit in excess of $2 million if they don't get their variance, and I feel that for, if for no other reason, the board should reject their request for a variant, for this zoning because of that lawsuit threat. Because if, if developers get the feeling that they can bully the City of Brookhaven around by threats of lawsuit, that will quickly become the new method of doing business in the, in the City of Brookhaven, and I feel that the, it should be rejected, like I said, if no, for, for no other reason because of that threat of that lawsuit. And that's pretty much my two points. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawley. Ben, how many more cards do we have? All right, so here's what we're going to do, and we've done this in the past. Usually, it's 10 minutes instead of the 20 that we have, but we recognize, but we're going to do everything fairly, so if we give anybody, we have more time to one side, it's going to have more time to, to the other, so be prepared to spend some time here. I mean, we need to hear everybody, so I'll entertain a motion. We offered 20 minutes to the applicant, 20 minutes to, well, we didn't have anybody who was, you know, voted, 20 minutes to the applicant, 20 minutes to those who support. If, I'll entertain a motion to extend that for some period of time so we can get, you know, get some, at least the last five people in, or may not get all your three minutes, but...
Mr. Chair, I would move that we extend the time for both the applicant as well as the opposition so that we may be able to hear by a total of 15 minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we, any, any discussion on that? Okay, all, all in favor of adding 15 more minutes to both the applicant and those in opposition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Am I opposed? Nope. Keep going. And again, feel free to just say you agree with the person before you too, so we don't have to use every second. Go ahead.
Greg Hammond?
But we don't want to discourage you from talking either.
I'll try to be brief as well. My name's Greg Hammond. I live at 1336 Chaucer Lane. That is the Canterbury Hills neighborhood. It's right across from Montgomery School, and I, I think that not a lot of people know about our neighborhood. A lot of people don't even know that we're called Canterbury Hills, right? We've heard of some of the larger neighborhoods there, but I, I want to point out that we've got only three streets where we can get out. Our, our pocket is pretty closed in from a traffic standpoint, so you're looking at Rustic Ridge, Dunwoody Lane, and Chaucer Lane. That pocket, I mean, I, I really sympathize with the gentleman who spoke earlier about being able to get in and out of my own neighborhood. Now, I've been here 20 years, okay? I've grown up on West Nancy Creek. I got married, I moved up to Chaucer Lane. I absolutely love my city. I love my location. This monstrosity going up here is, it, it's a train wreck. It's a mess, okay? Especially when we get past Ashford Green, okay? You get past Perimeter Summit, everything's a single-family home. And really, we look to our elected officials to safeguard our property and the character of our neighborhood, okay? I mean, that would be my appeal to you. I strongly oppose this, this measure. One last thing I'd like to say is, it, it seems to me there's some additional plans that are going to happen. I mean, we've already been through the substation mess. We have that. But you've got plans, I hear, for the future of Ashford Green? So, I'm wondering, you know, how this is being considered in light of other plans with Ashford Green? More people, more density, hearing arguments about, you know, water, population, traffic, school system for an already packed-out Montgomery Elementary. I'd like you to think about that, too. I mean, this, this doesn't, this isn't an isolated patch here as we look at that corner. That corner is already terrible. Can't even get back in my own neighborhood. So, thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just going to give time for Aranda to add a minute and 22 seconds that was remaining from the previous 20 minutes that we had. But the next speaker is Harry Cardile.
I'm sorry? Okay. What, the name was, what was the last name, though? Sorry.
Don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly. It's Cardile, C-A-R-D-I-L-E.
Cardile.
Okay. Next.
Alan Mick?
My name is Alan Mick. I live at 4110 Oak Forest Drive. I'm actually, if we can use this here, my house is located on lot, lot four right here with a 45-foot setback, and I come at this at a little bit different approach because I don't have, I don't have kids. I know the traffic's traffic in Atlanta, and this certainly won't help, but I'm looking at certain issues here where, you look at this, this one particular unit here, I have a 45 and a half foot setback. I had to conform with the two houses on either side when I did that. It's a minimum of 40-foot setback, but I had to conform and balance it between the two. As you're coming around the corner here and you come up to this first townhouse, lot one, that's sitting 22 feet off the street. These are so-called two-story townhouses with drive-under garages. When you do a drive-in the garage, you've got front stairs up here, 16, 16 feet off the, off the base. It's a three, a three and a half story structure right next to my house as I'm coming around. It's going to look like a, a wall there, either a brick wall or siding or something like that. One of the other, okay, I'm adjacent to this section here, this other section here, if you look at the contours going down through here, there's a drop-off from the curb here on Oak Forest Drive of 50 feet following these contours all the way down to the back, and the only way is going to be a clear-cut fill. However, they're going to try to develop that side, I have no idea. One other point on my side, there's one, two, three, four units with the back elevated up above the garage facing my master bedroom window from my sideline, and you have a road And you have a road dead-ending. There's some buffer in here, but this is also dead-ending thirty, forty, fifty feet. I mean, this room is only forty feet, uh, deep, I think. So I would say I overwhelmingly oppose, oppose this. In to summarize, I would just say it's a totally inappropriate, unacceptable type of rezoning. To me, it's this classic kind of spot zoning. It takes away the very essence and the entrance to our subdivision. It's, um, it's completely, to me, it's, it's not oriented correctly to our streets with, with, with the sides, with rears facing the, the sidelines of the houses. And, um, as I said, it's gonna take away a lot of the trees, our entrance. And as Alan Cole was saying, it completely redefines and re-characterizes the whole subdivision where we're living. It's very inward-looking with the sides, backs, rears, all facing us, so it's not part of our subdivision. It's kind of an introspective, inward-looking, isolated kind of a development, which isn't part of it. It doesn't transition anything. And I, I've said before, I'd like to see it stay our one-hundred that everybody's talking about. I mean, we, there's other possibilities of a little bit more dense, single-family houses and that type of thing. But I just wanna say I'm completely opposed to this. I think it's, it's totally inappropriate. It's unnecessary, and that's my standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Mick. I appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Jimmy Turnage. I live at three nine one six Ashford Dunwoody Road. We've been there for twenty-eight years. And we loved it so much when we bought our house, we moved three mailboxes down the street. And I must say, it is a residential street. The city limits under Brookhaven is right here where they're wanting to do all of this, and it is residential all the way till it ends right here on Peachtree Industrial. And every day when I come home from work, well, today, I passed four places, four, that had been leveled. All these huge, beautiful trees gone. Who knows what they're gonna put there? But the last thing that I wanna see when I come home from work every day is that. I mean, one thing I love about our neighborhood, it is single-family homes. I've raised my children there. In fact, Alan may be the only person that knows this, our neighborhood is so old, it's called Devonshire. And I don't think anybody even knows who Devonshire is. But it is a single, single-family place, and I just don't think townhomes, I mean, I take issue with it being substandard. I love our neighborhood, and those people that live there over the years have been wonderful. So, anyway, I'm opposed to it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Turnage.
No more speaker cards, Ms. Chairman.
Okay. Well, thank you. And, uh, sorry, Mr. Roberts, they went through all the time. Uh, so in, uh, in the spirit of fairness and equity?
You're welcome to extend that if you'd like.
Okay.
To the opposition.
Yeah, I guess we did to the, didn't we?
Yeah, we did extend it, but he already spoke for three minutes.
Yeah, just everybody, yeah, let us do it here.
He already spoke for three minutes.
Yeah. I think he's already spoken, I think, and, and we're not obligated to.
You're not necessarily obligated to.
I think we're, I think we certainly.
Is there, actually, is there something that he wanted to say that wasn't said before?
That would be different. If he's gonna say something different than what we've not heard.
Why don't we ask that?
Mm-hmm.
Give us just a minute if you would. You know, what we can, you can do, though, if we don't give the extra time, if, if when we open up to questions, you can, somebody can ask him. Done our three-minute thing. I think stick with what we've been. Okay, everyone has, all right, here's what we've, kinda, everyone has spoken. We've extended the time beyond the twenty minutes. We've heard, we're beginning to hear some of the same things, you know, from people. We know everyone wants to speak, and we, we tried, but I think we've, I think we've, we've gotta move, we're gonna move on, and, uh, it's time to, um, hear from the, it's time to hear from, from, from the, from the applicant and their representative at this point. So.
They moved on.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Dillard, it's your time now. If we have questions, by the way, remember, we can ask questions of people, so, you know, who've spoken, so.
How much time we got?
Oh, thirty?
Just wanna give you a little comfort.
I know.
I'm not gonna take thirty minutes.
Yeah, I believe. I've known you long enough, but you'll get, you'll get your, but you'll get your piece Thirty-three minutes.
You know, thirty, thirty-three minutes.
Point of order, Ms. Chairman. I apologize.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. Before the applicant speaks, um, just in the fact that we are extending the full fifteen minutes to the, uh, to the applicant, we do have that eight minutes, fifty-three seconds. There are additional, uh, comment cards that have been brought up. Um, one additional I just got. Um, so if we'd like, I would suggest.
I, I have a feeling the applicant is saying it'd be okay.
Right.
So let's hear from the, the other app. We.
So it was eight minutes, fifty-three seconds.
Okay.
I apologize for the interruption.
Now, that's okay. We, and I, and I appreciate that, Mr. Dillard. We're, you know, we want everyone to be, we want to hear, we're, we're trying to do the best we can. So, all right. Three minutes or less.
At first of all, apologize for the misunderstanding. I think all of us, if we had known that in order to get the time that we felt we were gonna be allocated, that we needed to submit cards, we thought our time was gonna be handed over to Clay. So, in the spirit of that, I'm Emily Joy Taylor. I live at four one eight one Oak Forest Drive. I've lived there for just over ten years with my husband and my son, who has attended Montgomery Elementary, and, um, would like to hand off my time to Clay. Clay?
I'll try two minutes and thirty seconds or something like that.
Okay, I'll try and be as brief as possible to finish what portion of my argument I can. I, I'd like to, we've, we've talked a lot about whether you can build single-family homes on this property. Single-family homes are there now. I don't need to belabor that point. But you don't have to take my word for it. This is the last, two iterations ago, this is the proposal, the site plan that Rockhaven Homes was proposing. And if, I don't know if you can see it, but where my pin is, there are seven single-family home lots. Now, the density along the whole property is greater because they have, they still have more townhomes added up. It's like forty-something. But what, what's very telling about this is, is you heard Alan Cole and Alan Mick talk about is, this is the most buildable portion of the property over here. If you were gonna propose on a site plan where you're gonna build single-family homes, you'd propose them where you say you think you can build them. All along, they've been telling everybody in our neighborhood, it can't be done. We can't build, build single-family homes. And what do they do? They propose seven homes on the hardest part to build single-family homes. I'd submit to you, that is evidence that they can do it. They just can't do it for as much of a profit as they'd like to. Now, I wanna finally address this step-down buffer concept. That is a legal fiction. That's created to act like they are for this neighborhood, somehow supporting the neighborhood to step down from commercial or high-density property. As, as Alan mentioned, and a lot of people mentioned, nobody in our neighborhood has even seen that as a problem. Nobody's asking for a step-down. But my question to you is, where's Alan Mick's, you heard Alan Mick stand up and talk about his home and the wall of bricks and siding that he's gonna look at and the dead-end road. Where's his step-down? He's got, he's got standing to come in here to you six months from now when this gets underway and say, I want my step-down. I wanna sell my house and build forty-eight townhomes. And then the neighbor next to him, and the neighbor next to him, the precedent this is gonna set is gonna damage every single one of these neighborhoods. And I wanna read to you from the City Community Development Report. "The eastern side of the subject Oak Forest Hills neighborhood is bounded by a contiguous development of four similarly-zoned R-one-hundred single-family residential neighborhoods. The southern side of the subject neighborhood, Oak Forest Hills, is bounded by a contiguous development of nine similarly-zoned R-one-hundred single-family neighborhoods." So don't let anybody tell you that this area is not residential. It's nothing but single-family residential homes. And if we allow this to happen, pretty soon, we're gonna have a hotel sitting right on top of Murphy Cantler Park. We don't need a buffer. I wanna read to you a case, and I'm sure Mr. Dillard's very familiar with it.
Time is up, sir.
Yeah, and we're, and I, and I, and I, everybody, we, we have stretched and stretched. It's time for, um, so let's make it very clear from this, you know, we're through that, we're, make it clear to Mr. Dillard how much time he has, so, because we wanna be perfectly clear, fair, fair?
To be perfect.
To be perfectly fair.
To be perfectly fair, essentially, it would be twenty-eight minutes.
You okay with twenty-eight minutes? Excellent. We, all right. And I, and I, I wanna say I appreciate you letting us stretch the thing a little bit here, 'cause it's important that.
Well, it's important to the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah.
It's also important to these property owners and this developer that we have a fair and open dialogue about what needs to go on this property, because it's clear that the current zoning is not appropriate. If it was appropriate, it had been developed. Now, we mentioned thirty-three minutes that I had a little while ago. Thirty-three from twenty-fourteen is nineteen eighty-one. Nineteen eighty-one, I brought the first Lake Huron subdivision to the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners to rezone that property for non-residential use. That Lake Huron neighborhood is now a portion of Perimeter Summit. We then later brought in the Cox property, where the Cox, uh, building is on Lake Huron. Overall, neighborhood opposition and after a lawsuit, got that property zoned for a million square feet of, of office and a three-hundred-and-fifty-room hotel, which is yet to be built. In addition to that, we brought in the Lake Huron Circle neighborhood, which was nineteen units that now are approximately where Villa Christina and, and the Hyatt is today. We got that zoned without litigation, but only after we had taken Ashford Green and the Lake Huron neighborhood to the Supreme Court of Georgia. The arguments you hear tonight are not new. I've been hearing them for over thirty years. Same old, same old, same old. Leave it, single-family detached residential. And that's fine for the Oak Forest neighborhood and the Nancy Creek, Nancy Heights neighborhood to talk about that, because they don't own this land. They're not the ones that have been here for the last thirty-some-odd years on property that has no reasonable economic use. Now, that doesn't mean that it doesn't have some value. Supreme Court doesn't require that it be valueless. Matter of fact, it recognizes the fact that all land has some value. But I submit to you that during the last thirty, thirty, over thirty years, as Ashford Green and the Lake Huron neighborhood and the neighborhood that's adjacent to, to, uh, to Lake Huron that now has a twenty-three-acre buffer adjacent to St. Joseph's and the Johnson-Ferry-Glenridge Connector system, that this property, had it been suitable for development under the R-seventy-five category, would, it would have been done. This is a very affluent, desirable place to live. There's no question about that. As a part of that nineteen eighty movement, we had all, I had a client that had all or a part of the Oak Forest neighborhood also under contract to redevelop to non-residential. That, that contract did not go through. And as a result, the Oak Forest neighborhood has remained where it is. Have those properties gone down because of the high-density urban environment within which they live? The answer is no. Are there expensive homes being built in the Oak Forest neighborhood today? The answer is yes. Are they being built on this property? The answer is no. And why is that? Because R-seventy-five, for this under-five-acre piece of property, six basically vacant lots that have been rented for years, is not suitable for development as a single-family detached residential use. It would have been done. Existing owners would have done it. Somebody would have come in and put, put these properties together. I can't tell you the number of clients or potential clients that have come to me over the last thirty years to look at this property for non-residential uses. From a racetrack to a, to a drugstore to office, all across the, all across the way. I refuse to take those cases because it doesn't need a non-residential use across from Ashford Green. It does need to have a transition of residential into and from the Oak Forest neighborhood. And this is exactly the kind of use that I have urged over the years that needs to go on this now less than five acres. We can't sit here and hold these property owners hostage because of the unsupported allegations that traffic is gonna be bad because of this development. Traffic's already bad. You think thirty-six additional residential units on this property is gonna cause any kind of serious impact on an already overcrowded Ashford Dunwoody Road? The answer is no. Can you use traffic as a justification for the denial of a rezoning? Supreme Court has said resoundingly, no, you cannot use traffic. The staff's report relative to the school impact shows that the school system says that the, that the student generation from this development on the Montgomery Elementary School would be minimal. Can you deny rezoning because of hydrological or surface water or water and sewer issues? The answer is no. Those are permitting issues. Either got sewer or you don't. We do have sewer here. I remember when we did the Lake Huron development, the Nancy Creek's outfall sewer ran across Lake Huron Drive. And it came from up around where North Park is. We improved that system as a part of that development. And this, this watershed falls within that Nancy Creek basin. There is adequate sewer. Hydrological issues, we can't flood our neighbor. We got some real topo issues on this property. It's gonna cause a lot of, of fill. It's one of the reasons you can't, you haven't seen anything built on it. The, the topo is so severe, you can't do a single-family home. So today, today, look, I've been hearing that for years.
It's like you gave them the respect.
Yeah, that's right. So, so the, the thing about it is, the utilities are available. You can't deny because of traffic. I submit that the, the impact on schools is, is, is minimal, and you really can't deny zoning because of the impact on schools anywhere. That's the Board of Education's job. What you've got to determine is, is the property suitably zoned today? And does the R-seventy-five classification cause this property owner to suffer damages that's not suffered by the community as a whole? And are they special to these property owners versus those that are in close proximity? The answer is, this property does not compare suitably or, or comparably to other single-family detached R-seventy-five residences in the Oak Forest neighborhood. If it did, like I said, it'd been, been developed. Rockhaven is building nice homes in this community already. If there was an opportunity to do single-family, they would be doing it. Thirty-six homes, when there's over a hundred existing homes, does not change the character of the neighborhood. If you look at the, the townhouse photograph that we provided for you, these townhouses were done probably fifteen years ago on Lennox Road at the intersection of Fern Cliff right below the MARTA station. Um, they're across the street, they're existing across the street from, uh, a home for the elderly and, uh, high-density residential. The residential street, the pictures that you see there, are but the back of these, of this development. This is a comparable type of townhome that we're talking about for this particular area. And given the Lennox, Lennox area, it is a comparable, uh, environment within which we are looking at tonight. The value of the single-family homes that are just, that, that are adjacent to these townhomes accrue annually at a higher rate of value, increase in value, than other homes in, in the surrounding, uh, neighborhood between Rocks, Roxborough, uh, Lake, uh, Lennox, Lennox Road and, uh, North Druid Hills Road. So, um, this concept in an urban environment is not unusual. This concept, as we look at the comprehensive plan current recommendation, which is suburban character, which is up to eight units an acre, and our current, we're, we're consistent with that. But if you look at what we are looking at as far as amendments to the comprehensive plan, I'm sure you're very well aware of those discussions, we're looking at an activity center. We're looking at a node of urban development, not only here, but all the way into Dunwoody, to the transit station around it. We're looking at a true urban core. And when you do that, it doesn't prohibit single-family detached residential, but what it does allow for is a mix of housing. And nobody, nobody in my over forty years of doing. And nobody, nobody in my over 40 years of doing zoning work has shown how this type of product, where you're looking at six, $700,000 townhouses adjacent to similarly valued homes or greater, single-family detached, causes the single-family detached to go down in value. I've never seen a praiser come in and show me that. It doesn't happen. What does happen, though, is where you've got a deteriorating in uninhabited or rental piece of property that's not maintained in close proximity to a single-family detached residential, it does cause that single-family detached residential to go down in value. And that's exactly what we got here. This property left unzoned, R-75, is not a benefit to the Oak Forest neighborhood. It is a detriment to the Oak Forest neighborhood. The best thing that could happen is for this property to be developed. We think it needs to be developed in accordance with RA8 designation as we have submitted. But the thing that you need to look at is whether or not, first of all, is R-75 a suitable classification? If you think it is, then so be it. But if you think it not, then we ask that you exercise your leadership and your discretion to help us and city council come up with a use that is suitable. And we feel that the RA8 designation is a suitable designation. It's not going to be a substandard home. They're not going to bring the value of this neighborhood down. And as a matter of fact, I think that while this neighborhood and others, Burnwick and others fought us over the Lake Huron situation years ago, I think they would all admit that being in close proximity to their job, being in close proximity to their office, being in close proximity to shopping has, in fact, been a benefit to them long-term. Because I can show you on the tax records and the sales that the values of those homes that abut Perimeter Summit, that are in the Oak Forest neighborhood, that are down Ashford Dunwoodie Road, and by the way, your DOT folks say Ashford Dunwoodie Road is not a minor arterial, it's a major arterial. It is not a residential street. And I know that we've got residences that front it. But when you look at what needs to happen, it's your leadership and your discretion that we ask you to help us with. We think we've come up with a reasonable plan. If it doesn't work, then I think you need to, first of all, decide whether R-75 is okay. If you say R-75 is okay, that's the end of the day. We strongly disagree with that, and I've got three Supreme Court decisions across the street that can show you how these properties don't compare to the other homes that are located in the Oak Forest neighborhood. On a per-square-foot basis, these lots don't compare to the lots that the folks that were opposing this homes are located on. It doesn't, and it won't, and it never will. So with that, we ask that you look at this in a fair and impartial way, and I know you will. These decisions are not easy. But at the same time, when we cross over from suburban to urban, these are the kind of decisions that need to be made. And they need to be made cautiously, but they also need to be made with the understanding that only, denial of this can only be made if there's an overriding public health, safety, and welfare protection that's going to be afforded by Oak Forest, to the Oak Forest neighborhood because these properties remain R-75. And it cannot damage these property owners to the extent that you are taking a valuable property right from them. I think to deny it, that's what you would be doing. Is there something in between that might work? We don't know. We hadn't had that dialogue. We hadn't had that opportunity. Single-family detached on this property does not work. And we ask that you rezone the property in accordance with the site plan approved and the conditions that's submitted by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Okay, so with that, we've stretched this to make sure we heard both sides of it. And with that, we're going to close the public hearing and give the planning commissioners an opportunity to ask questions of the staff, anyone who has spoken, and the applicant.
So let's start on, which way do I usually start? We'll start down here this time with.
I have my question.
Okay. Mr. Levy?
I have some questions.
Okay.
This is a question for the applicant. I want to pick up on the last sort of theme, I think, that you were raising, dealing with its current use and whether it has a reasonable economic value, because I agree with you, that is pretty much the heart of the decision right there. And you made the comment that we could not, these properties did not, could not compare to the lots, I guess, were internal in the Oak Forest neighborhood. How would this compare, though, to Ms. Rutherford's lot, who, I understand, lived on 4089 Ashford Dunwoodie? Essentially, the other existing residential homes that are on, that front Ashford Dunwoodie, because I think that's sort of where I'm struggling with.
As you leave Perimeter Summit and go, I guess it's south down Ashford Dunwoodie Road, you've got some homes that have been there for a while that were built originally on Ashford Dunwoodie Road. But you also, as you go past Marist, if you go past the apartments on the right and as you approach Blackman Park, you'll see a very different type of housing that is present, particularly as you go from the Harts Mill Light toward Johnson Ferry. Okay? And what I'm saying is, you're not going to build, that doesn't mean that there hasn't been somebody that's built a big house. I had a client that came in off Ashford Dunwoodie and did a little cul-de-sac, and he faced that. I can't, it's not a chaucer, but it was like a six or eight subdivision. But it was a cluster deal, and we did it to RA8, okay, for him to do single-family detached on that particular location. But I believe that once you pass Perimeter Summit, then that roadway changes significantly, not from the number of trips per day, but it does become more residential in character. We don't have that benefit. Okay? And as you go down toward the school, past the school, Nancy Creek Heights, if you look at those houses, they don't have a lot of houses fronting on Ashford Dunwoodie. They front the internal streets that come off of Ashford Dunwoodie. So I think there are some houses, there are some houses that are there that have been built and improved over the years. There's no question about that. But I do believe that the character of Ashford Dunwoodie changes after it passes Perimeter Summit.
Okay, and I think the question is, and maybe it's, can I help with this? Maybe it's better for the staff. Could you tell us the value, the property at 4089 Ashford Dunwoodie Road? Do we have that? That's the Ms. Rutherford's house, I believe?
Give them the value.
I think that's what they, no, I think they were asking, I think you were asking what the price per acre was or something?
Well.
Not what their price is.
Oh.
It's a 3,500 square.
Okay, all right, now that's it. You don't have it? Okay, well, then we'll just have to move on with it, okay?
Sure.
All right, I'm going to pass for now.
Question for the applicant. You mentioned that you're sort of open or had thought about other uses for that parcel and something in the middle from a density standpoint. What sort of discussion or thoughts were given to a cluster neighborhood? Single-family zero-lot line cluster homes?
You know, I think that's, I think that's possible. I think that the thing, if you look at cluster, and we just did a cluster with Rock Haven at Roxborough Road and Norwood Hills Road, okay? Single-family detached situation. You got topo issues where density needs to accommodate the additional development costs that are required by that. We did look at, as was pointed out, we did look at putting some single-family detached against the neighborhood back there. We got no, we got no support for that, so we went back to what we know will work. But I think the client is certainly willing to explore any and all alternatives. We've met with the neighbors several times. We've not been able to get anywhere close to agreement, so here we are.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, Ms. Palmer, was that your last name?
Rutherford?
Rutherford, Mr. Rutherford.
Ms. Rutherford?
Robertson.
Did I get the wrong?
First gentleman that spoke.
The first gentleman, red jacket. Mr. Clay Roberts.
Were you a participant in the discussions with the developer?
Yes, I was, and actually the first.
So tell me about the conversation when cluster homes as a concept came up.
I was the one who brought it up. I'd love to comment on that. The very first meeting was across the street from my house. My neighbor was having it. I walked in, the very first question I asked was, have you considered cluster homes? Because I think you might get support from this neighborhood to consider single-family homes with smaller lots. And the response that I got from Mr. Dillard was, if you want to talk about single-family homes, we don't have anything further to say. And I left. You can ask anybody, because that's what happened. We talked about it at the next meeting. We said, single-family homes. Brad Hughes, who represents the developer, said, well, what would you all consider? And we said, well, are you offering single-family homes? And he said, well, I'm not saying that. And we said, well, that's what we would consider. And we'd consider helping you get variances so you can build more homes than you're lawfully allowed to build. And all we got was that one plan where they showed homes, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you suggest homes on this part here? This part here that's so developable, there's no topographical issues there, why wouldn't you? Because that's the easiest part to develop. That's what we're saying. I believe, and I can't speak for everybody in the neighborhood on this issue, because we haven't talked, because we've never been given the offer, but I believe if the developer came to our neighborhood and said, we'd like to put cluster homes on both sides of this road, an attractive neighborhood, something similar to on Harts Mill and Shambly, I can't think of the neighborhood, Mendon Hall, something like that, or another cluster-type neighborhood. And I've seen, I've seen Rock Haven's homes do it. They've got something called the enclave on Peachtree Dunwoodie Road. It's three homes that swing in on a little circle that they've built. They could build more in here. This is a larger piece of property. It's never been proposed to us. We asked that it be proposed.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
I'll pass. Go down.
I have a question for the applicant. Regarding tract A, of those parcels, are any of them addressed Oak Forest Drive?
Any of them?
Are any of them addressed on Oak Forest Drive, or are they all addressed Ashford?
I think they're all on the internal streets.
The parcels?
They're all facing, they're going to face external, okay? And they're going to have rear entry?
Currently. Currently, those are all.
Oh, currently, oh, currently. I think they're all Ashford Dunwoodie.
Yeah.
The tract.
Yeah, let Ben add, let Ben add.
Which track is Oak Forest?
He's referring to tract, you're referring to tract B, right? The one up north or?
Tract A.
Tract A, okay.
All Ashford Dunwoodie?
Tract A is all Ashford Dunwoodie.
And, and just as a follow-up, Ben, tract B is all Oak Forest?
Tract B.
No, corner house.
One, yeah, one is Ashford Dunwoodie, two are Oak Forest.
Please, just let us, I know this is hard. Everybody wants to talk, and we want to answer, but we've got some process we need to. Okay, I have.
That's the only question I have right now.
We'll come back, we need to, to make sure. I have, actually, I have three questions. And the, and I guess you might as well come up and stand up. Okay, are there any variances that are being anticipated in this site plan that are being offered? I mean, are you going to go from us to the ZBA or?
There are no variances.
Okay, so there are no variances being, at this time. Okay, two more. Are there any measures, and thinking about the community, you know, and trying to figure out a way to balance it, as I said earlier, are there any measures being taken over and above the current tree ordinance to protect the trees and kind of buffer the community behind? I mean, I drive in there, and I see all these big trees, and I know the tree ordinance. I know absolutely you'll adhere to that, but is there anything that you're doing over and above that?
I don't think we've had a tree study done on the property. You know, obviously, that'll have to be done as a part of the land disturbance permit. You know, we're open, I think, to the preservation of specimen trees. They cost money to take down, and they help sell homes. So I may want to leave as many as possible, but I'm not aware of any study that we've done at this point. Chris, we've not done, we've not been asked, but.
I was just, that's okay, I was just asking, I really, but it's not a part of your proposal to have anything over and above the current.
But we've not asked, we've not asked, and I think you've just recently done some work on your tree ordinance, we've not asked for any variances from the tree ordinance.
Okay, and the last question I have, considering, and I understand your argument, and this is not, you know, about, by the way, this is R-100, not R-75, Mr. Dillard.
Okay.
But, but the argument's the same. In the design, we're being asked to make a recommendation, not just on the land use, but the site plan tied to that land use. That's what we're doing here.
Right.
This is not, you know, land use without a, so are there any design aspects of the current site plan that are over and above the required setbacks to shield, Mr. Mink, is it? Yeah. Or to shield the, I can't remember, the owner of the two homes that abut the southern piece of the property? I mean, there's, is it Gamble, Ms. Gamble, that owns those two? So I'm asking you, are you, is there anything in your plan over and above the required setbacks?
Not, not existing, but we would be open to additional landscaping, buffering, and that kind of thing.
But not something?
We've not proposed it, because we hadn't had anybody to talk to about it.
You might remember that for the next, I mean, I, it's just, I understand you'll always, I have no question about, Rock Haven or other builders that you represent will always adhere to the, you know, to the ordinances. I'm looking for something.
If there's, if there's additional material that we can put in that buffer area, the setback, however you want to do it, cause some of it's undisturbed, we'd be more than happy to do that. I don't think that'd be a problem. And that's fairly routinely and easily defined and done, because, you know, we want the neighborhood to blend into the neighborhood, but we also need, we understand there needs to be some separation as well.
And I think you understand, we need things in writing, you know, everybody has great intentions and.
Make it as a condition.
I wish it had been, or would like it to see it, you know, as conditions of things.
We draw those kind of conditions all the time. We've just not had an opportunity here.
Okay, do we want to let Mr. Dillard, are we going to go pop up and down again? We're going to go through?
Actually, I do have a question for Mr. Dillard. You just referenced that you're willing to increase the buffer, adding some materials so that you can have a separation between the single-family home and this town community. Is this the first time you've heard that tonight, or did that come up in the community meeting?
We've talked about it obliquely, but we never got any serious dialogue going, so we didn't really pursue it. But what we're talking about, though, Mr. Funny, is putting additional material into the setback. There's a trend, there is a transitional buffer, as I understand the ordinance anyway. So what we would, what we would propose is that we would put additional material in that, in that setback and transitional buffer over what the code requires.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillard, the cluster home community, you brought that up. Obviously, the community says they're open to that. Are you open to going back and looking at that proposal?
We're always interested in trying to work it out with the neighborhood. And let me just say why that wasn't pursued, is that we submitted the six or seven lots along, and that was, didn't get us anywhere, so we didn't feel like negotiating with ourselves, so we went back to the original plan. But I'm just going to, I'm going to say that, you know, they're, obviously, the owners of the property, and there's a price involved, okay? But we are always willing to sit down with the neighborhood and try to discuss and try to reach some dialogue. And we have had those meetings, but they've just not been fruitful.
All right.
Okay.
Have we covered?
No.
Okay, I think we've generally covered, so I'll.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah.
I have a question for staff.
Are we done?
Yeah, I think you are. Yeah, we are. We're going to just, again, bear with us, because we're really, we wrestle with these things.
Mr. Song, I have a question for you. This is coming back to us for decision-only. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We don't have another. We gave it our deferral.
Exactly, that single approval for deferment was already used last month.
Okay, so with that, it's.
That means there's more questions.
Okay, well.
So Ben, can we recommend deferral to the council to then defer back to us? We have one what we can make. That's 30 days, but then can we recommend deferral to the council?
I believe with the change that we made effective, providing the planning commission with a single ability to defer for a 30-day period, I don't think that's a possible recommendation that you could pass on to city council.
Down here.
I have two quick questions for staff.
Okay, go on. Yep, Bert, and then we'll come back to you.
All right, and this is for staff as well. All right, so in the nearby surrounding land analysis, part of the staff report, the density of all the surrounding areas, it looks like it ranges from the 1.45 to the 2.22. Is there anything close to, or even halfway between that, the 7.64, as far as within the five-mile radius or so?
Not in terms of a similar use, but I mean, if we're to look at it as, there is the, I can't recall the name of that, the apartment complex which is in Premier Summit.
Sure.
That is, I believe, around 50 units to the acre, which is in close proximity of residential use.
This is Villa Christina.
Well, next to Villa Christina, correct. Sonoma, I believe. But that is at around 50 units to the acre. If we're talking about development pattern, somewhat consistent or similar to this area would be the next commercial note down along Ashford Dunwoody Road, which would be Johnson Ferry in Ashford Dunwoody. And at that proximity of that commercial note, there is obviously townhome developments, apartment developments, that are both adjacent to the Kroger Shopping Center and across the street from Blackburn Park, which would be somewhat similar in terms of the actual built environment. In those instances, they, most developments there would exceed the density that's presented before you tonight in this rezoning.
All right, thank you.
Ben?
Yes.
Could you just, the applicant had mentioned cluster development under RA8. Can you just give us a quick clarification on what RA8 allows?
Sure. I was looking into that, just to see what other zoning classifications would qualify under a cluster development. Unfortunately, the ordinance that we have adopted from DeKalb County, there are two specific zoning classifications, RCD and RCH, I believe, that allow for a cluster type of development to move forward. Unfortunately, those two zoning districts have been repealed. So it only recognizes those developments that had previously been developed before, I believe, April 13, 1999, under that zoning district, but there's no other rezoning that an applicant can come in and seek those two specific zoning districts. The RA8 specifically allows for attached and detached products. If you're going to go with a detached product, it requires that it be minimum 6,000 square feet. So the cluster effect in that case is sort of, I don't necessarily know if you will be able to have that same type of development, or it could be genuinely called a cluster development just because of the required lot size requirement.
Okay, I'm going to, I think it's time. I think we've heard from everybody, and I realize we probably can sit here and, yeah. It's, I think we've got a, what do they call it, Fisher Cut bait, I think, at this point. I think we've got to do something. So I'm going to call for a.
Wait, I have a question.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, folks, but it's very important. I mean, I appreciate you all taking the time, but there are some technicalities we need to make sure before we vote because we can't defer again.
Okay.
So let's be clear. Talk to me about that cluster home, the square footage in this RCD and RCH. Is that in our comprehensive plan that we just submitted? Do we have anything for that?
Well, simply put, RCD and RCH are no longer available zoning districts. That's what I wanted to put out there.
Even in our new plan?
Well, regardless of the comprehensive plan, because the zoning districts are determined by our zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And because of those two zoning districts being repealed, unfortunately, we do not have that as an available district that someone could seek rezoning to.
So then if we go to the RA8 with that lot, are you saying that lot is too small, too big? That's what I was not clear on.
Ultimately, I don't, it depends on the general public's sort of definition of what they would consider as a cluster home. 6,000 square feet doesn't necessarily mean that you could actually have all these homes built in close proximity to each other. Although 6,000 square feet doesn't seem like a lot, there are still setbacks associated with the development as well. They would have to seek multiple variances for individual lot or for the overall development in order to develop somewhat of a cluster-type development. But there isn't a specific zoning district that would fit specific to that request of developing a cluster.
Correct. Thank you.
All right. I mean, this is, we volunteer for this, folks. All right, so I will entertain a motion on, a combined motion, Ben, since we heard it combined.
I would ask for, well, in this case, because we present it as two separate, I would prefer two separate motions.
Okay, so I'll ask for a motion on RZ14-16, the Rockhaven Homes redevelopment.
I'd like to make a motion that we deny RZ14-16.
Okay, we have a motion for denial of this. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? I'm going to, I always do this, right? Discussion, just a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We appreciate everybody's input. We appreciate hearing both from the applicant, and we recognize the homeowners who own this property. We recognize the people in Oak Forest, but there are one, two, three, four, five, six, there are eight conditions that we have to adhere to. And so when we're looking at it, I think we all, we all know the properties. We've all been through there. We look at these eight conditions. We listen, and we've heard on both sides. And so I'm ready to, since somebody else has anything, I'm ready to call the vote. Those in favor of recommending to the city council that RZ14-16 be denied, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, two opposed. So one, two, three, four, five, in favor of recommending denial, two.
May I ask for a raise of hand for those who oppose?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, I'll ask for a motion on RZ14-17, the second plot.
I'll make a motion to deny RZ14-17.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion, any discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of recommending denial of RZ14-70, raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify, raise your hand and signify by saying, you know. So only one did?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. All right, so six recommending denial, one opposed to that. All right, thank you all. We'll take a five-minute break. So before you go, there's one more thing. Everybody stop. What is the date specific for the council meeting?
This is November 18.
November 18 is a city council meeting, and that'll be at 7 o'clock?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM in this room. Okay, thank you. We'll take, it's 8:40. We'll take five minutes and hear the other next case at 8:45. Thank you. Countdown. We're on. Okay, this is item number RZ14-19, Castle Works, Inc., request to rezone from R-75 to RA8 along Telford, 1327, Telford Drive. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is a single lot at the terminus of Telford Drive. It's currently 0.922 acres. The subject property is surrounded on three sides by an apartment complex currently zoned RM85. The applicant is seeking to rezone this property to subdivide into four lots. The proposed density is 4.34 units under the RA8 zoning district. There are similarly zoned parcels within that area that have higher densities. And actually, the proposal for 4.34, even with the RA8, would actually provide a density that's lower than even the density provided by the existing R-75 in the area. Based upon the request, staff has provided a staff report, which we stipulate to. Staff did recommend approval with nine conditions atomized under page 181 in your docket. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'll open the public hearing, and we'll listen to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I promise this isn't going to last as long as the last one, okay?
I can promise, I can promise that as well.
And this is R-75, not R-100. I'm sorry, I got confused.
And I couldn't resist, too.
I know, that's okay. People love to catch me, you know. It's 0.92 acres. We're looking at four houses on those four acres. This is sort of the cottage-type, is this going to be picked up? Okay.
180 degrees.
Going this way?
There you go. Thank you.
Sort of a cottage-type home. The applicant actually lives across the street from his property, so he's developed in the area. We got RM85 next to us, which is an apartment deal. This looks like a really good transition. The conditions that are recommended by staff are okay with us. I'd like for you to look at number eight, because it talks about a tree preservation area. Really hadn't talked to Ben about this, but we couldn't find in the code where tree preservation area was defined. What we will do is we'll comply with the tree ordinance. We're going to have to look at that as a part of the hydrological issues relative to land disturbance, drainage, and that kind of thing. But as far as what we understand about what we're being asked to do, we don't want to take down any trees we don't have to, and we'll comply with number eight. We just want you to understand that we got to do retention somewhere, and we're not real sure where that's going to be. But other than that, minimal impact on streets and the staff recommended approval is acceptable to us. So with those comments, we ask that you approve it as recommended by staff.
And I'm sure you're reserving the rest of your time.
I reserve the rest of my time for a moment.
We're getting, we're getting there. We know, getting, okay. Do we have any?
No, we do not have any speaker cards in support or opposition.
Okay, so with, do you have anything else you want to say? Okay, so with that, we.
I have Doug Griffin here to answer your questions.
Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to the commission to ask any questions of either the staff or the applicant. No? No? No. Well, the only question I have is about that condition number eight, and is there a better, after you, I know you and Mr. Dillard have talked, and I guess we mentioned, it was mentioned in the work session, but it's as-is. I mean, is there anything you would propose to be different than you originally wrote, or do you like, you want to keep it, does the staff want to keep it the way it is, or?
Well, actually, I didn't have a direct conversation with Mr. Dillard, but I did have a conversation with the applicant, Mr. Griffin. And we did talk. The intent of that tree preservation area essentially was a tree save area, more or less. But they do bring up a good point, because under condition number nine, they are required to provide for water retention and water quality. Condition number nine, the way it's, the language provided does provide the flexibility to the developer to either develop a single retention pond or a single sort of water treatment feature, or individual water quality features for individual lots, which, based upon the topography, may require them to encroach a little bit further towards the back end of the property. Essentially, condition number eight could be dealt with per the tree ordinance that we did adopt, where it does require for a certain amount of tree preservation to be considered. I believe it's 100-inch DBH per acre. So in this case, I believe they'll be more than able to meet that requirement. So if it's the desire of the planning commission, it essentially is up to the commission to decide what you would like to do.
If we left it in, is there enough flexibility for the applicant to do what they need to do with your, I mean?
In all honesty, I believe it may create difficulties.
Okay, so you're, okay, and the second question, are there any, are there any variances that are a part of the site plan that are foreseen at this point?
Not that I'm aware of, and I believe the intent of the developer was to move forward with a development that would not seek any additional variances.
Is that true? So there are no, at this point, there are none. I always realize you have the right, if something comes up, to.
This is for staff. At what point in the process is the cul-de-sac dedicated? In other words, that has to be done before the construction of the homes begins, or is that simply, you know, they do it, and at the end, the cul-de-sac will be dedicated?
It would occur during the land disturbance permit phase. They would have to show all disturbances associated with the development, so that would, that's when it would be triggered.
All right, so we don't have to build in any conditions as far as the construction of the cul-de-sac relative to anything else, the other construction?
Not necessarily, unless, again, if it's the desire of the planning commission to sort of specify that, just for, you know, a greater understanding of how the development should occur. But that's, that's an option that's available.
Put it this way, could they, if we don't mention anything about the cul-de-sac, I know we've got, the condition one talks about the property being limited to four single-family detached homes in accordance with the site plan. Since the site plan references the cul-de-sac, then that should pick up, and we'll guarantee that we'll have a cul-de-sac?
Oh, yes, yes. If they did not have the cul-de-sac, they would not be able to get all four of those lots.
Okay.
No, I was just going to make sure. When we were talking about when will the cul-de-sac be completed, I think if they build the properties with the subgrade there and just finish it out at the end, I think that will leave a nice look versus building it out on the front end, and then all the trucks comes in and tear it out. I would suggest them, you know, just doing the subgrade and letting that be raw until all the homes are built.
Correct. But in either case, in terms of the actual permitting process, it will be taken care of during the land disturbance permit phase.
Chris?
Yeah.
Shannon?
And just to add additionally, obviously, in addition to the LDP, they would also be required to go through the final planning process as well. And that would also take care of that end as well.
So I heard, if I understood what you said, you're saying you would be, the staff would be okay with condition A, if we, if a motion were to be made to approve this and delete condition eight, you would be supportive of, the staff would be supportive of that?
Correct. I think, again, tree preservation could be completed just based upon development that they're requesting. Definitely, there's always a concern related to stormwater runoff, that we would prefer that to be in place, and for them to have the required water quality, water retention area. That may have more, a greater impact than necessarily the tree save area that we sort of condition under condition number eight.
All right, so I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion on RZ14-19.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we closed the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing is closed. We have a big crowd. I think we handled this pretty well. Public hearing is closed. We've, any questions, any more questions for anybody? All right, so I'm ready, we're ready to entertain a motion for RZ14-19.
I'll make a motion to approve RZ14-19.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we want to talk about how to deal with that, the staff conditions, as far as that aid, or just leave it as is with the recommendation, with the staff recommended condition number eight, the tree save?
This is your motion, clarify the motion. So I guess there are two ways. You can ask, first, who made the motion, to amend the motion to include certain staff conditions, or you can make a motion to, a second motion, which we would then have to deal with first, so I don't.
I was looking for a point of clarification, whether his motion included that or not.
Included staff recommendations. As written. Okay, so the motion, to be clarified, the motion is to approve RZ14-19 with the nine staff recommendations as currently written. And we have a second on that, so.
I'd like to make a motion to remove condition number eight.
Actually, the motion is, has already been made. It's been second.
But he can, he could.
He can ask for.
He can ask for amendment to the motion. That would have to be-
Yes, we dealt with three, four, we deal with first.
Correct and accepted by the initial, the commissioner who made the motion initially.
There are two, there are two ways to do it. You can ask for a friendly amendment, ask the person who made the motion, you know, to, and Ray heard, said no. So you can make another motion to amend, you know, which I'm hearing you say.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend Commissioner Frank Corr's motion.
And, and-
And, and the, the motion to amend would be to remove condition number eight.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend to remove staff recommendation condition number eight. Do I have a second on that one?
All right, I'll, I'll second it. I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to amend, which is the removal of staff condition number eight? Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, so that's what we're gonna vote on first, is?
And then essentially, if Commissioner Frank Corr will be accepting of that friendly amendment, then I-
No, no, it wasn't a friendly amendment.
Oh, it wasn't a friendly amendment?
It was an amendment to, it was, it was a motion to amend.
Okay.
I think we tried and there was a mis-
Yeah. We tried, it didn't work, so we did a motion to amend. But Robert's rules are wonderful, aren't they? Page 246. So we have a, a mo, the first thing we're gonna vote on is a motion to amend, which eliminates staff condition number eight. We have a motion, we have a second, we have no more discussion. All in favor of, of that, of the motion to amend, which removes staff condition number eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're gonna vote on, we have a motion and a second to recommend to the city council approval of RZ 14-9, 19, as amended, which takes out staff condition number eight. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, bottom line is, we got this without condition number eight. That's good.
It just moved a little faster.
It's okay. That's procedurally, procedurally, that was good. Thank you all. We appreciate it. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman.
What's the price point of these houses out of Q?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Countdown.
Second.
Any discussion? We're on, okay. All in favor of adjourning? Item number RZ 14-19. Castle Works Inc., request to rezone from R 75 to RA 8 along Telford, 1327 12, Telford Drive. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is a single lot at determinance of Telford Drive. It's currently nine point, 0.922 acres. The subject property is surrounded on three sides by an apartment complex currently zoned RM 85. The applicant is seeking to rezone this property to subdivide into four lots. The proposed density is 4.34 units under the RA 8 zoning district. There are similarly zoned parcels within that area that have higher densities. And actually, the proposal for 4.34, even with the RA 8, would actually provide a density that's lower than even the density provided by the existing R 75 in the area. Based upon the request, staff has provided a staff report, which we stipulate to. Staff did recommend approval with nine conditions itemized under page 181 in your dockets. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I'll open the public hearing and we'll listen to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I promise this isn't gonna last as long as the last one, okay?
I can promi, I can promise that as well.
And this is R 75, not R 100. I'm sorry, I got confused.
And I couldn't resist too.
I know, that's okay. People love to catch me, you know. It's, it's 0.92 acres. We're looking at, at four houses on, on those four acres. This is sort of the cottage type. Is this gonna be picked up? Okay.
180 degrees.
Going this way?
There you go. Thank you.
Sort of a cottage-type home. The applicant actually lives across the street from this property, so he's developed in the area. We got RM 85 next to us, which is an apartment deal. This looks like a really good transition. The, the conditions that are recommended by, by staff are okay with us. I'd like for you to look at number eight, because it talks about a tree preservation area. Really hadn't talked to Ben about this, but we couldn't find in the code where a tree preservation area was defined. What we will do is we'll comply with the tree ordinance. We're gonna have to look at that as a part of the hydrological issues relative to land disturbance, drainage, and that kind of thing. But as far as what we understand about what we're being asked to do, we don't want to take down any trees. We don't have to and we'll, we'll comply with, with number eight. We just want you to understand that we gotta do retention somewhere. And we're not real sure where that's gonna be. But other than that, minimal impact on streets and the staff recommended, recommended approval is, is acceptable to us. So, with those comments, we ask that you approve it as recommended by staff.
And I'm sure you're reserving the rest of your time.
I reserve the rest of my time for a moment.
We're getting, we're getting there. We know, getting figured out. Okay? Do we have any?
No, we do not have any speaker cards in support or opposition.
Okay, so with, do you have anything else you want to say? Okay, so with that, we-
We're able to answer questions. I have Doug Griffin here to answer your questions.
Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the commission to ask any questions of either the staff or the applicant. No? No. Well, the only question I have is, is about that condition number eight and what, is there a better, after you, I know you, you and Mr. Diller have talked and I guess we mentioned, it was mentioned in the work session, but it's as-is. I mean, is there anything you would propose to be different than you originally wrote? Or do you like, you want to keep it, does the staff want to keep it the way it is?
Well, actually, I didn't have direct conversation with Mr. Diller, but I did have conversation with the applicant, Mr. Griffin. And we did talk, the, the intent of that tree preservation area essentially was a tree save area, more or less. But they do bring up a good point, because under condition number nine, they are required to provide for water retention and water quality. Condition number nine, the way it's, the language provided, does provide the flexibility to the developer to either develop a, a single retention pond or a single sort of water treatment feature or individual water quality features for individual lots. Which, based upon the topography, may require them to encroach a little bit further towards the back end of the property. Essentially, condition number eight could be dealt with per the tree ordinance that we did adopt, where it does require for a certain amount of tree preservation to be considered, I believe it's 100-inch DBH per acre. So in this case, I believe they'll be more than able to meet that requirement. So if it's the desire of the planning commission, it essentially is up to the commission to decide what you would like to do with the next amendment.
If we left it in, is there enough flexibility for the applicant to do what they need to do with your, I mean?
In all honesty, I believe it may create difficulties.
Okay, so you're, okay, and then the second question, are there any, are there any variances that are a part of the site plan that are, that are foreseen at this point?
Not that I'm aware of, and I believe the intent of the developer was to move forward with a development that would not seek any additional variances.
Is that true? So there are no, no, at this point, there are none. I always realize, you have the right, if something comes up, that, that.
And this is for, for staff. At what point in the process is the cul-de-sac dedicated? In other words, that has to be done before the construction of the homes begins? Or is that simply, you know, they do it and at the end, the cul-de-sac will be dedicated?
It would occur during the land disturbance permit phase. They would have to show all disturbance associated with the development, so that would, that's when it would be triggered.
Right, so we don't have to build in any conditions as far as the construction of the cul-de-sac relative to anything else, or the other construction?
Not necessarily, unless, again, if it's the desire of the planning commission to sort of specify that, just for, you know, a greater understanding of how the development should occur. But that's, that's an option that's available.
We'll put it this way, could they, if we don't mention anything about the cul-de-sac, I know we've got, the condition one talks about the property being limited to four single-family detached homes in accordance with the site plan. And since the site plan references the cul-de-sac, then that, that should pick up and will guarantee that we'll have a cul-de-sac?
Oh, yes, yes. If they did not have the cul-de-sac, they would not be able to get all four of those lots.
Now, I was just gonna make sure. When we were talking about when will the cul-de-sac be completed, I think if they build the properties with the subgrade there and just finish it out at the end, I think that will leave a nice look versus building it out on the front end and then all the trucks comes in and tear it out. I would suggest them, you know, just doing the subgrade and letting that be raw until all the homes are built.
Correct. But in either case, in terms of the actual permitting process, it will be taken care of during the land disturbance permit phase.
Chris, anything else?
Yeah.
And just to add additionally, obviously, in addition to the LDP, they would also be required to go through the final planning process as well. And that would also take care of that end as well.
So I heard, if I understood what you said, you're saying you would be, the staff would be okay with condition A? If we, if, if a motion were to be made to approve this and, and delete condition eight, you would be supportive of, the staff would be supportive of that?
Correct. I think, again, tree preservation could be completed, just based, based upon development that they're requesting. Definitely, there's always a concern related to stormwater runoff, that we would prefer that to be in place and for them to have the required water quality, water retention area. That may have more, a greater impact than necessarily the tree save area that we sort of condition under condition number eight.
All right, so I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion on RZ 14-19.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we closed the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing is closed. I'm, you know, we have a big crowd. I think we handled this pretty well. Public hearing is closed. We've, any questions, any more questions for anybody? All right, so I'm ready, we're ready to entertain a motion for RZ 14-19.
I'll make a motion to approve RZ 14-19.
Any discussion?
Well, do we want to talk about how to deal with that, the staff conditions, as far as that aid? Or just leave it as is with the recommendation, with the staff recommended condition number eight, the tree save?
Is your, is your motion, to clarify, a motion? So I guess there are two ways. You can ask, person who made the motion to amend the motion to include certain staff conditions, or you can make a motion to a second motion, which we would then have to deal with first, so I don't, you know.
I was liable for a point of clarification whether his motion included that or not.
Included staff recommendations.
As, as written.
As stated.
Okay, so, so the motion, to be clarified, the motion is to approve RZ 14-19 with the nine staff recommendations as currently written. And we have a second on that, so.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to remove condition number eight.
Actually, the mo, the motion is, has already been made. It's been second.
But he can, he could add-
He can ask for amendment to the motion. That would have to be-
Yes, we dealt with three, four, we deal with first.
Correct and accepted by the initial, the commissioner who made the motion initially.
There are two, there are two ways to do it. You can ask for a friendly amendment, ask the person who made the motion, you know, to, and Ray heard, said no. So you can make another motion to amend, you know, which I'm hearing you say.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend Commissioner Frank Corr's motion.
And, and-
And, and the, the motion to amend would be to remove condition number eight.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend to remove staff recommendation condition number eight. Do I have a second on that one?
All right, I'll, I'll second it. I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to amend, which is the removal of staff condition number eight? Is there any more discussion on that? Okay, so that's what we're gonna vote on first, is?
And then essentially, if Commissioner Frank Corr will be accepting of that friendly amendment, then I-
No, no, it wasn't a friendly amendment.
Oh, it wasn't a friendly amendment?
It was an amendment to, it was, it was a motion to amend.
Okay.
I think we tried and there was a mis-
Yeah, we tried, it didn't work, so we did a motion to amend. But Robert's rules are wonderful, aren't they? Page 246. So we have a, a mo, the first thing we're gonna vote on is a motion to amend, which eliminates staff condition number eight. We have a motion, we have a second, we have no more discussion. All in favor of, of that, of the motion to amend, which removes staff condition number eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're gonna vote on, we have a motion and a second to recommend to the city council approval of RZ 14-9, 19, as amended, which takes out staff condition number eight. Any more discussion on that? All in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, bottom line is, we got this without condition number eight. That's good.
It just moved a little faster.
It's okay. That's procedurally, procedurally, that was good. Thank you all. We appreciate it. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman.
What's the price point of these houses out of Q?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good.
Any opposed?
Now you can ask.